I have an eight.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the City of Columbia, February 2015 Planning Commission Meeting. We will call to order now the February City of Columbia Planning Commission Meeting. Welcome to the Planning Commission, members, staff, and guests. I would ask that everyone turn their cell phones and PDAs to the silent or vibrate mode. The clerk will proceed with the roll call.
Good evening. Rick Cohn.
Here.
Gene Dinkins, Jr.
Here.
John Taylor.
Joshua McDuffie.
Here.
Brian Stern. Dale Stigemeyer.
Here.
And Craig Waits.
Here.
We have quorum.
I would like to briefly review the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted at a presentation time of ten minutes. This time should include, but is not limited to, an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant, such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. The clerk has a timer and will make presenters aware of when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. Please make sure all cell phones are off. Consent agenda. The Planning Commission uses the consent agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the consent agenda, that item is removed from the consent agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining consent agenda items.
Chairman, this evening, before I read the consent agenda, I did want to offer up that there has been a change in the agenda as well. We have a request for a deferral for item number 10. That is the north side of Buckner Road and the east side of Alcott Drive. So when we get to that case, we will ask the commission to defer. But the regular session consent agenda for this evening consists of the following. The approval of the January 2nd, 2015 minutes. The following annexations with map amendment. 4426 Blossom Street, tax map 13810-02-02, and 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. This is a request for a recommendation to annex and zone the properties RG2, the property zoned RMHD in Richland County. 2423 Chappelle Street, tax map 11605-02-08. Request for recommendation to annex and zone the properties RG2, the property zoned RMHD in Richland County. 1054 Shop Road, tax map 11211-07-05. Request for recommendation to annex and zone the properties M1, the property zoned M1 in Richland County. 1080 Shop Road, tax map 11211-07-06. Request for recommendation to annex and zone the properties M1, the property zoned M1 in Richland County. We will move 2751 The Boulevard to the regular agenda because of a recusal. So that then brings us to number seven, a map amendment. This is a minor amendment to a PUD at 816-818-822, 824, and 825 Washington Street and the north side of Lady Street. Tax map 9013-13-3, 4, 5, 6, 9, and 7. It's a minor amendment to the PUDC. There is a site plan review for minor modifications to that site plan at the Village at River's Edge, which is plus or minus 28 acres, at Rawl Street, Aspen Wall Road, McQueen Street, Pearl Street, Valkyel Court, McCray Street, and Gibson Street. Tax map numbers listed on the agenda. Site plan approval to construct five additional residence units within the previously approved residential development. This is a PUDR. The final item on your consent agenda would be a street name approval request, and it is a request to name the streets within the Burnside Farms subdivision. Tax map 19100-06-14. So your consent agenda consists of number one through nine, excepting 2751 The Boulevard to go to regular.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from number nine, so if we remove that from the consent agenda as well.
Did you get that, Krista?
I did.
Do any commission members or guests today wish to have any items on the consent agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? If not, I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda deleting items nine and 10.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
That would be number six and 10.
Excuse me.
Six and nine.
Six and nine.
We'll get it. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Who was the second?
The second.
Brian. Thank you.
Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we have another, we have two more.
Yes, if you could defer to your vice chair, he can, perhaps if we could vote on those two consent agenda items together. That would be number six, 2751 The Boulevard. Annexation with map amendment. And number nine, the street name approval request for Burnside Farm.
And we will take them separately correct, since Craig's recusing for number nine.
Certainly.
Regarding item number six, like the motion for either approval or denial of the request to turn application to annex and zone the property M1.
Mr. Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning and annexation of the properties 2751 The Boulevard.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass.
The next would be the street name approval request.
Okay, item number nine, street name approval. Like a motion regarding the request to name the streets in Burnside Farms subdivision as stated on your agenda.
I'll motion to approve the street name approval request in Burnside Farms subdivision.
Okay, a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. We now move to your regular agenda, where we would request the commission to defer the matter at the north side of Buckner Road and the east side of Alcott Drive at the request of the applicant.
I would like to remind also everyone, when you come forward today, please state your name clearly before speaking. Number... So number 10 has been deferred.
Yeah, we would request, the applicant has requested a deferral. I guess we don't usually get y'all to vote on that. But just on the safe side, if we could have a vote to defer.
All right, the applicant has asked to defer number 10 NS Buckner Road and ES Alcott Drive. Do I have a motion to defer it from the commission?
Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to defer case number 10, the north side of Buckner Road and east side of Alcott Drive until next meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion pass. Number 10 will be deferred.
Thank you. Your next item is a map amendment at 701 Chester Street. I believe we do have a recusal from Mr. Dinkins on that. It is a tax map number 09012-01-16 and 09012-01-15. Request to rezone from PUDR to M1, and if you'll give me a moment to get us there. This is an old PUD in the Elmwood Park neighborhood that I think was a victim of the recession. And the current owner wishes to zone it back to an M1, which is in the vicinity of the property. Here we are.
Any questions from anyone on the commission?
Do we have any history on this? Was it previously zoned M1 prior to the PUD being granted?
Yes, it was. It was originally zoned M1 and then rezoned to the existing PUD.
But staff's recommendation is to deny?
Correct.
Do we have any guests who would like to speak on this today? Okay. I request a motion then.
Actually, can y'all elaborate a little bit on why y'all suggested to deny this? We're looking at the map. Generally speaking, the neighborhood is predominantly single-family, some duplexes mixed in. The M1 is kind of a holdover from days past. Staff believes that the best use of this property currently would be some type of residential use as opposed to the light industrial use that you see the gray back to the, you know, west of the property and you run it to the cemetery. So that's why.
It also should be noted that the triangular piece that runs along what is the old railroad right-of-way, while it appears to be part and parcel of the neighborhood, is actually quite separated by that berm. And so that industrial piece of property isn't generally considered part of the neighborhood. So there are some orphan industrial parts here, and we had this discussion earlier. It is generally the policy of staff to try to preserve industrial as much as possible because of the desperate need we have for that product. In this case, however, being in such close proximity to this residential neighborhood, we felt otherwise.
And I'll just add that also the master plan for the villages of North Columbia recommends low-density residential, specifically single-family detached homes.
Does the applicant have any plans to redevelop the property immediately?
I think the applicant is taking every idea into consideration. The original PUD called for single-family homes. It was a single-use development. Just wouldn't meet the lot area. If, for example, you took it now and rezoned it back to RS3 and wanted to get the yield that you would have gotten with the PUD, you couldn't do that. And like Ms. Hampton said, due to some changes in the economy, I think the original PUD, you know, and some development, I guess, regulations as far as, not to get too specific, but there's some issues with the property as far as some underground utilities that are kind of hampering the project as well. So it's just kind of, that's what it is at this point. It's been...
So we're not aware of any specific plans at this point.
Should the Planning Commission recommend that this is denied? Would it just remain as a PUDR until a future redevelopment opportunity or a future zoning change request would come forth?
It would, yeah. If that, if city council were to also deny it, that would be the case.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion if you're ready.
Yes.
I make a motion that we deny the request to rezone this parcel from PUDR to M1.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of denying 701 Chester Street from a planned unit development to M1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion's denied.
Next item on the agenda is number 12 at 2931 Divine Street. Tax map 13804-18-06. Request to rezone from C1 Office and Institutional to C2 Neighborhood Commercial. And the applicants are here to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission to staff?
This one looks pretty straightforward.
Any guests wanting to speak to the commission today?
I'd like to speak.
State your name, please.
My name is Ralph Garrus. Either my wife or myself own the property contiguous to the subject property. We would like to join in and ask the property to be rezoned as requested by the owners of the property. We own 2927 Divine Street, which is contiguous to this.
Okay. Which piece, Mr. Garr, which piece I'm trying to look on is that?
Is it the one that has the C1 on it? In the middle?
I can't.
Is it this one?
It's that one right there with the red dot on it.
It's the one that has the C1 on it.
Okay.
The process for that would be to make application. We'd be happy to talk to you about that. There's a notice requirement and all of that kind of good stuff. Good, thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Do we have any other guests who would like to speak on this, please?
My name is Tom Carlisle, and I'm president of the Oakwood Court Neighborhood Association, which is tangential to the proposed parcel change. We've been impacted somewhat by some of our commercial neighbors, primarily bars on Divine Street. There aren't that many of them. And we don't per se object to the change in the zoning, but we'd like to see certain restrictions to certain... We'd like to avoid the impact of a fast-food chain or some, there are some other uses that we'd highly object to. But C2 as in and of itself is probably the appropriate zoning designation. Unfortunately, it includes some things that our neighborhood would object to. And I don't know if zoning changes can include certain restrictions or not in Columbia. So for that reason, we would object at this time to the change.
Thank you. Thank you. Is the applicant here, Krista?
Yes, the applicant is here. And as just my staff point of view, while the C2 zoning would open up some additional uses, other requirements would have to come into play too. For example, if you wanted to put a restaurant in a C2 property, of course you have to meet the parking requirements. I've heard that being a question. And of course, any use that's permitted in C2, as long as you can meet the parking requirements, would be allowed with the zoning change.
To the specific question too about conditions, South Carolina does not allow conditional zoning. So when you allow a zoning classification, it comes with all of the rights, and you can't restrict any of those.
What are the major differences in the uses from C1 to C2?
You get a little more, well, for example, restaurant would be a good example. You step up a little bit with more of your retail uses, general-type retail uses. C1 is basically, you know, office and institutional. I mean, while some, you know, very limited commercial may be allowed, it's... I mean, while some, you know, very limited commercial may be allowed, it's pretty restrictive to C1. The C2 just opens up the retail component. Probably another difference is more of the uses in C1 would probably require a special exception as opposed to the C2.
Brian, the representative from Oakwood Park noted that they've had problems with some of the adjacent bars on Divine Street. Would a, would a bar be allowed in this zoning designation if we were to rezone this to C2?
A bar would be a permitted use. It may be with a special exception. I'll have to look. But of course, it would have to meet all the other separation requirements and parking requirements. And I can give you that answer in just...
Is that, so that's right? So bars are allowed in the C2 zoning designation? I thought it was C3.
By special exception, a drink establishment would, if it could meet the other requirements, be permitted in C2.
But you would, it would require a special exception proving unusual circumstance?
Double check that real quick. Is that it? Correct. A special exception would be a permitted use in C1 or C2.
Or C1 or C2.
With a special exception.
How about a fast-food restaurant? What sort of zoning would you need for that?
In C2, it would be. It, if it had a drive-thru, it'd have to get a special exception.
Feasible under special exception?
Parking would, is an issue potentially.
Understand. Just assuming all those.
Yeah. C1 and C2 allow a bar under a special exception?
Not outright.
Yes, that's correct.
Does, does Henry's Bar and Grill operate under a special exception at the corner of Holly and Divine Street?
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Does Henry's Bar and Grill at the corner of Holly and Divine, does it operate under a special exception? Because it seems to be inadequate in terms of its parking.
I think I'd have to check on Henry's, the specific of the parking. I know that it possibly is continuation of a non-conforming use. Or there may even be some other relief as far as parking there. But just to clarify, an eating place in C1 can only be an accessory use. It's permitted outright in C2. A drinking establishment is permitted in C1 and C2 with a special exception, and it'd have to meet the separation from another drinking establishment. And a place of worship, which there's a church right on the other corner. And, you know, parking again would be kind of problematic, I'm guessing.
Thank you. Thank you. With the applicant?
Yes. Hi, I'm Justin Mueller with Lat Purser and Associates. I'm the applicant. Would it be okay if I pass something out to the staff? So what I provided for you is the same thing I've actually given to Tom. It's just the leasing flyer that we're going to do for the property. I know the application is, has some nuances to it with the additional square footage. So our, our goal is, you know, it's currently a 2,500-square-foot building that's in C1 zoning. And we're going to be chasing basically soft retailers that will be between 1,000 and 3,000 square feet. The reality is a lot of retailers don't want 2,500 square feet, so we want to add another 500 square feet. And with parking ratios, I know that's, that's come up. Currently, at the, at the building size, it would be 9.7 spaces per 1,000. And that would allow us a restaurant or retail. Restaurant with a bar will not be accepted. That requires 12 spaces per 1,000. After we, if we do the addition to the building, and if we, we prefer to get 2,500-square-foot user and put them in there. But if we have to add 500 square feet, that would put us at 8.3 per 1,000 spaces. So that would give us restaurant or retail. Tom and I have talked over the phone a couple times, and our plan is to meet with the Neighborhood Association on February 26th at their next meeting. You know, kind of tell them that exactly what we're chasing is the soft-goods-type retailer. But the reality of the market today is there are just a lot of restaurants that are looking to open up. And we're not looking for anything with a drive-through, anything like that. But it would be a Zoe's Kitchen Chipotle-type use. But our preference is obviously the apparel or accessory-type use. But some of those have been, as you know, hit hard, hit hard by the recession. Some of them are expanding. A lot of them are combining with each other. So there are just a lot of folks who aren't out there. So we are definitely listening to the concerns of the neighborhood and willing to work with them. And appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any commission members have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other guests who would like to speak on this? You can speak again?
Tom Carlisle again. Not to belabor any points, but what, what they chase may not be what they catch. And I think what they are chasing in the, in the form of a boutique shop would be great. And we, we know that something has to go in there because Goodmanson and Bike is leaving. We would prefer, on the other hand, to leave the zoning as a C1 and let them operate whatever they find as an exception, just as Goodmanson and Bike has operated in the last, I don't know, 25 years or more. So we'd, we'd rather see it C1. That would restrict them from being able to put those things that are allowable in C2 that we would object to. And then we would like to give them approval for when they find the appropriate retailer. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners want to discuss this further?
Yeah. You know, I think as an ordinary rule, we're certainly not in favor of any sort of commercial encroachment or upgrading of parcels that may be zoned C1 or C2 and then taking them to more intensive use for a neighborhood, adjacent neighborhoods. I don't think, in general, that's not something that we've been in favor of in the past. I think you're looking at a little bit of a different situation here. For me, the fact that the existing Goodmanson and Bike has operated for so long as a permitted non-conforming use kind of triggers to me, is the property zoned correctly? I mean, they stated they've been here for 25 years operating. I, I don't, not really in favor of non-conforming uses operating. I realize it's necessary sometimes, but I understand their concern that we don't need any, don't want a bar, you know, right there. That's certainly an understandable concern while absolutely a long shot under this scenario. But again, that may, would be accomplished in a C1 zoning anyway. So in this particular instance, I am in favor of rezoning this property to the more intensive C2 use because I think it fits this particular property right here.
And we, we have been very sensitive to residential neighborhoods, this, this commission. And I would tend to agree with Gene on this. I, I feel that we really don't have the same situation we've had on the others where they backed right up to the backyard of it. So...
Are we to understand, though, that, that the adjacent property owner is also, based on his statement here, planning to submit an application for rezoning to C2 as well?
Not at this time.
Oh, okay.
No, that we can't...
I was just curious.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning from C1 to C2.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Next item on your agenda is item 13 at 315 South Maple Street. Tax map number 113130402. Request rezone from RS3 CC, single-family residential community character overlay, to C3 general commercial. I believe the applicant is here as well.
I was going to see if staff could expand on this a little bit because the way I look at it, it's already being operated as commercial use, correct?
It's operated as a civic and social organization. It's a, we have a Elks Lodge or, you know, Mason Lodge or something like that. I'm probably butchering exactly what it is, but it's a fraternal organization, maybe a Freemasons organization. That has been in existence and operating for many years at that location. It is a non-conforming use. It would be allowed to continue to operate as it has for many, many years. Again, staff does have reservations about the uses and potential uses that would be permitted in the C3 district adjacent to the residential district. And that is why we recommend denial of the request.
Any, any discussion from any of the commissioners? Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, good evening. Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Carlton Seagers. I'm a certified general appraiser in Columbia, Columbia area. I've been in business now for 34 years as of yesterday. And one day, my wife says, I'll get a real job. I have gone through this with the members of the Grand Lodge of South Carolina, who is the current owner of the property. And this building has been in existence since the 1940s. Back, I guess, when Rosewood Drive was a two-lane street up until the early 70s when it was, the character of the neighborhood started changing with a four-lane widening project out there. And I've gone through, looked at the property, appraised it for them, and have looked at it from a zoning aspect. I'm also a certified zoning administrator through the old Southern Building Code Congress and now changed into the ICC and the IRC for conformity with all the codes. What we're looking at is, is a highest and best use of the building. As it sits right now, it's vacant and has been vacant for several years. The building is in poor condition. It cannot be brought back out as a Masonic Lodge. The charter, the, the membership dropped. The charter was pulled voluntarily. There was nothing that was forced on them. It was, the building is still being maintained by the Grand Lodge of South Carolina. It's, it's a fairly costly venture. Other uses for the area would be, and what they're requesting right now is just a change from the current zoning of RS3 with that community character type of overlay to bring it into conformity of C3, which is your general commercial zoning indicator. And there is some interest in the property by a gentleman that owns a restaurant across the street, a health food store. And discussions with him have brought about the need for some additional parking as ancillary types of parking. He's currently using some parking in the church adjacent to his. But barring him negotiating a sale with that and getting everything together, the property will stay there. As a fraternal organization, as a, as a Masonic Lodge, it's no longer being used. This would present, or has the potential to present some types of problems and issues with the neighborhood as far as the, the character of the neighborhood. You don't want an abandoned building in your neighborhood. This would allow someone to come in and take the building down and put it to a, a better use. Something that would be more in nature with the Rosewood area. And with the advent of the green building boom and the energy efficiency, I'm also lead green associate certified, and I have done extensive studies in, in energy efficiency, if you will, natural parking lots, things of that nature. Someone come in and develop it as a, as a parking facility, pervious pavement that the water would not run off of into the storm sewers and pollute, but would instead be absorbed into the ground and allowed to filter naturally. Vegetated buffers being established to help shield and protect the neighbors, to, to allow people to, to congregate there, if you will, in a, in a healthier type of environment than what would, or what could exist. The, the studies that I've looked at indicate that it would not be profitable to go in and build a restaurant in there. It would not be profitable to put a bar in there. Rosewood's got a lot of those. It would not create a traffic hazard. It would enhance the area. It would allow someone to come in and to, to improve. As a single-family residence, if you were to build one in that, in that particular block, you certainly have enough room, but you have to ask yourself the question, would you want to build your house in, in that area, a new house in there? So that would somewhat restrict it. There are various and sundry items that you have to look at in there. But mainly what we're looking at is to bring the property into conformity by having it changed from the residential to the C3.
What is the current square footage of that building?
Pardon me, sir?
What's the square, rough square footage of that building?
Of the building? It's a 58 by 76. It's about 4,000, 4,500 square feet.
So right now, you're zoned residential, RS3?
Yes.
And there's quite a bit of residential around you.
Yes, sir.
Take it to commercial or C3. Would that allow any nightclubs or anything like that?
Potentially, based on the zoning.
Special exception?
Yes.
Guys, I, I currently think this is something that would be good for that area. You know, to be quite honest, that looks like a building that, in those areas, that will sit there and be vacant for a while. And I agree with the applicant in the sense of something that sits, sits for a while and becomes kind of an eyesore and somewhere for people to hang out and congregate. I think it's got a better potential to be redeveloped as a commercial play there than it does for that building to be demoed, to eat the cost of the building when purchasing the land and then try and do, build a single-family home there. Can I ask why the applicant didn't, you didn't, C1 or C2 weren't possibilities in terms of the zoning?
I believe the zoning, and I stand to be corrected by the, the people from the zoning administrator's office, it abuts C3. Is that correct?
It does.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Right, but that wouldn't prevent a C1 or C2 zone, would it?
No, you could apply for a C1 or C2 if you're adjacent to a commercial or an industrial zone. And I may add also, in the RS district that is currently zoned, the Board of Zoning Appeals potentially could grant a special exception for the use of a parking lot as it's currently zoned for commercial use. I'm just kind of throwing that in there since we were talking about parking lots earlier.
Typically, though, would staff, if they were going in to get a rezoning change here, if it was next to C3 zoning, is that what you would advise them to, to apply for?
Well, certainly would give options of C1, C2, RG, or, you know, keep it like it is and potentially, you know, if you want to have a parking lot, that's an option, too. There, there are several options.
You were, you recommended, staff recommended a denial.
Correct.
Why was, what were the reasons for that?
Specifically because of the potential uses in C3 and the adjacency to the RS3, you know, one of our lower-density single-family districts.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Question for the applicant. You mentioned that part of the reason, the intent...
You mentioned that part of the reason intended here was to bring the parcel into a conforming parcel. But you also, you mentioned to me that the lodge is gone and is relocated.
Yes, sir.
So I guess I'm struggling with that.
Back when the lodge was built, there was no zoning in effect at that particular time.
I understand.
As the, as the commercial corridor developed along Rosewood Drive, the zoning on either side or the uses on either side of Rosewood quite naturally gravitated to commercial uses. This building was already there and it was in a continued use as a, as a commercial-type structure, as a lodge, as a Masonic Lodge, which has always been. The zoning line, I was looking at it, in my opinion, they probably should have gone around it and zoned it at that time and included it in that commercial corridor going down Rosewood Drive. But, and I can't go back and put myself in their shoes, it was pulled into the residential side of it.
Understood. I guess what my question really was is, let's say that the commission and council approves a rezoning request here, what happens a month or two months from now? Is the lodge trying to move back in or is the property attempted to be marketed as a C3 lot or what happens?
That I don't know. I apologize for that. I just don't, I don't know. But if you stop and look, as an investor or as a developer and a builder, if you were to look at this, you want to look and see, what can I put on that piece of property that's gonna make me the most money? Highest and best use theory. Included in that is, you've gotta look at parking, the density of parking, the makeup of the neighborhood. Certainly, they don't need any more restaurants or bars on Rosewood Drive, so that may not be your highest and best use. Your highest and best use may be as a parking lot or as some other type of structure that would fit the character of the neighborhood and that at the same time would contribute to the overall neighborhood and would benefit.
But if you're not there?
Pardon me, sir?
If you're not developing it, I understand. Are you the developer?
No, sir.
Oh, you're just representing?
Yes, sir.
I'm concerned about it budding up next to this neighborhood and what could happen.
I think I'm concerned as well. I mean, I certainly agree and I've sensitive to some of his thoughts here with this building being here for so long, but I just think that C3 is too intensive to be immediately adjacent to the Shandong neighborhood without some sort of a gradual step down or a buffering or, I think this is a little bit intensive for my liking.
I have a question for staff. It appears that this lot's about a quarter of an acre, although it looks a little bit bigger when you look at it on aerial. What's the typical lot size for the adjoining Shandong neighborhood there? It looks, but the lot seems so much bigger.
The building seems bigger than 450 square feet to me as well.
Yeah, I think it would vary, you know, eight to 10, you know, 1,000 square feet lot, that's just the ballpark.
Is there anyone from the neighborhood who would like to, we have a few. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for your time.
I'm here wearing a couple of hats. One, I'm on the Shandong Neighborhood Council and being the engineer on the council, I chair the zoning and building code variance committee. We learned of this when I saw it on the draft agenda for this meeting. We're accustomed to getting a little bit more advanced notice from property owners. I'm also here as someone who lives one block away. This is 315. I live at 216. And as a neighbor, I learned of this when I saw the draft agenda.
Was it not posted like every other property?
I haven't seen a sign there unless that's the two states sitting in the front that...
No sign attached?
No sign attached.
If it was posted, if the sign came down at some point, you know, it's possible with the weather that we've had, but it was posted.
Anyway, we took, when the agenda came out and we could get the packet of what was going on, distributed that to all the neighborhood council. And it was unanimous vote to oppose the zoning change. One of the reasons, C3 leaves it too wide open. I mean, as it's been, Masonic Lodge religious, religious organization, okay, that fits in RS3. But changing it to C3, there's too many things that could go in there. The lot's not that wide. The existing building is just a few feet off the property line. If they demoed the building, if it was changed to C3 and they demoed the building and built something new, first thing they'd have to ask of a variance zone would be the buffer, the required buffer between the residential and the commercial. Because if they put proper buffer there, they would have a very long, skinny building and no parking. When the masons use the building, they park up and down the street because there is no parking lot at all for that building. When they go to tenants, they're parked on down past my house. So anyway, because of the fact that it just leaves it too wide open if it's rezoned to C3, the neighborhood is, the neighborhood council voted unanimously to oppose rezoning.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Ron Burns. I'm the president of Shandong Neighborhood Council. And, you know, we were, we were concerned several months ago when the C3 amendments occurred and the potential that we consider a threat to our neighborhood in terms of very high-density, you know, private dormitories. And we certainly are opposed to the possibility of changing a residential property into a C3 property, you know, a further encroachment, as far as we're concerned, to our neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Could I add one thing? It was mentioned earlier about a high and better use. For who?
Thank you, sir.
The neighbors or the property owner?
My name is Brainard Cooper and I live on the property that backs up to the property in question at the corner of Keewee and Maple. And I have concerns like they all have about the possibility of a business opening there because it's right next to my house. If they were to make it a parking lot, like the earlier gentleman suggested, I think that'd be a fine idea if there were certain, a zoning credential for that. But I'm scared to death of a business being there, what it'll do to the neighborhood, what it'll do to the property values if it turned into a bar or anything like that. So I just wanted to voice my concern about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other guests who would like to speak today?
My name is Basil Garzia. I own Rosewood Market across the street from the property. And the reason I'm here was to support the change to allow me to possibly have a parking lot there one day, but it would be mighty expensive parking. So I don't know that that would work, but after hearing the discussion about C3 versus C1 versus residential, I mean, that's up to you guys, but it does seem like it's more of a commercial location than residential. If I were to use it as parking, I think it would be ideal. I wouldn't encroach in the neighborhood. We'd put buffers up. We'd have, you know, wouldn't have pervious parking surface. But I don't know that that would be the case, of course. Anyway, I just wanted to give my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Joanne Morton. I live at 3219 Hayward Street. We already feel our neighborhood is being encroached on as much as, it's a feeling that you have with a neighbor who wanted to have a boarding house on Rosewood and now we see, which was denied. But now we see another encroachment. And as several people have mentioned, a parking lot might not be a problem, but you can't guarantee what will happen a month later or two months later or two years later in terms of this property. As for use of the property as residential, if you've been around that neighborhood much, you will see that people are infilling. They're using lots. There's a residential home being built even on Rosewood. So I think the issue is one that it could, it should stay residential and it potentially can be residential in the future.
Anyone else like to voice any opinions? Any questions from the commission? I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the rezoning request for 315 South Maple Street.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Motion is approved to deny.
And this will go on to City Council's zoning public hearing, which I believe is March 17. We will again send out that agenda.
Now our main topic of the evening.
We now move on to the presentation of Plan Columbia, the land use element. That sounds really exciting, but it really is. It's fabulous what we're doing. It's paving the way for our future, which is terribly exciting. Being that our audience is somewhat slim and you all have seen this, this would be your fourth time, I will go through it fairly quickly. I'm sad that John can't be here. I'm hoping he's at home streaming. He's done a tremendous amount of work and should be commended for what he has done, as well as our consultants, McBride Dale Clarion.
Do you want to strike them in?
And Planning Next, who have been terrific professionals and very responsive. As you know, this is phase one. We started off, we wanted to rewrite the zoning ordinance, but looked at what guidance we had to do so and it was lacking. So we decided to back up, rewrite the land use plan so that we could have more guidance to do so. We're hopeful that doing this work will make our job a lot easier when it comes to rewriting the zoning ordinance. We are now at the, at the, at the planning and drafting approval and you see that big blue looming circle, which is the diagnosis drafting and adoption of the land use code. We've been through numerous stakeholder, this doesn't fully show all of the meetings that we've had with stakeholder groups. Of course, we had the large workshops and forums as well. I love that picture. You don't get people out for a planning meeting like that very often. We had some open houses where we continued to get feedback and adjust the plan as well. The plan is basic, based on a framework, a land use plan, and then development types, and then it has some additional recommendations. As part of the work with the community, we established a vision and eight guiding principles that help us as we go forward with this plan. It is very much aligned with Reality Check, the Urban Land Institute program that I hope most of you all were involved with, talking about trying to concentrate development where we can see increased growth where there is already infrastructure. Some of the other strategies, because as a city, with our annexation laws the way they are, our major avenue for growth is through redevelopment and infill as well as adaptive reuse. So it talks about those kinds of strategies as it goes along. We might have a little bit of opportunity for greenfield development if we annex land as such, but generally speaking, when we have subdivisions that come in like this, they're already planned and they're coming to us for annexation. That is why it is so critical that we've been working with the county. We're both doing these at the same time and they are compatible, land use plans. Obviously, we couldn't do the same plan, but they are compatible. Lots of discussion about greenways wherever we go these days, about trying to find ways to connect our neighborhoods. We have the context of an urban core and an urban edge. That is what guides the rest of the recommendations, is where that context is. And then beyond that, you go into, is it neighborhood, community, or regional? And that's what I think is going to be really useful about this plan is currently, if you have a C3 zoning district, it doesn't matter where it is, it's the same, no matter what its context. And that's where I think we come into a lot of issues, a lot of problems trying to apply it. Whereas this plan, it will, we will be able to take into account the context that the parcel is and hopefully alleviate some of these issues that we have. We've seen the vision. So you, the framework is the urban core. You have mixed residential where we don't really have that now. We have single-family residential, multifamily. Now we're getting into more of a mixed residential. We've got, within those, you've got building types. So it, you're allowing for more flexibility with the use, but then you give a little bit more direction on the building types within those. And it has some illustrations to go along with it. And then, of course, there is the map. You can, if you look at this online, you can navigate and hover over and jump to each As we've mentioned before, I want to make sure anyone who sees this otherwise, because the Planning Commission has heard this quite a number of times, this is our vision for the use of land. This will guide the writing of the zoning ordinance. It will not dictate it. We will then begin the hard work of actually creating the new zoning districts, writing what the standards are for those, and working with the commission and the community over at least the next 18 months to get that adopted. And so this is the first step, has a lot more work to do. And we hope that that will begin here within the next couple of months. And these are our steps and then we will open it up for any questions.
Before we enter any questions or anything, I'd like to say to everyone on the commission, thank you. I think everybody's worked hard on this. I'd like to thank our staff. I'd like to note for the record, John Fellows, thanking him even though he's not here tonight. And I think we've gone over this quite extensively and have found a lot of little flaws and things in the whole plan that we've corrected and adjusted as many as we humanly could. And we will be involved in the future on getting this, on the whole process before it's written into the zoning law. Are there any questions or are we ready to vote on this? If not, I'm gonna call for a motion.
And for the commissioners, what you will be making a motion on, hopefully, is move to accept the, to pass the resolution, to approve the resolution recommending the plan to City Council. The resolution is in your packet. So the motion would be to approve or deny the resolution recommending the plan to City Council.
Would someone like to make a, I can't make a motion, can I? No. I can read it right here. The chairman can? I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution of the City of Columbia Planning Commission recommending to the City, Columbia City Council, the adoption of an amendment to the Columbia Comprehensive Plan 2018 by replacing the existing and future land components with the Plan Columbia Land Use Plan, putting the pieces in place. Do I have a second? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I do have one other item under other business at the request of Ms. Wolf, is just to remind you that we've got, you're reset with your three hours again. I know some of you all have already jumped on it, and I appreciate that very much, but you are reset with that. And I need to tell, some, there may be some other areas that, I know that the Urban Land Institute, there might be some organizations that you are currently involved in that might qualify, and I might, I was, and it may be some of the AIA. You have to get, you have to sign out the paperwork, but I will get that list of pre-certified groups to you so that you can be aware of those.
And you'll circulate that on the hours that you're, you would receive, etc. Wonderful.
I have a motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.